Perfect.
Thank you for the heads up. No bad language in Thai.
I was. Can I have the gavel?
Hey, 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 easy now.
Oh, my God.
No bad language.
We said something. We said a bad word.
You get half rate on when you're not here, right?
At this point, I'll take no rate.
Okay.
Oh, you leave Matthew alone.
Good afternoon, good evening. Welcome to the. Carter, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Steven Spina.
Here.
Jody Wilkinson. Lance Smith.
Here.
Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe. Matthew Maggard.
Thank you, thank you. First on the agenda is citizen comments. Ricardo, do you have anybody signed up to speak?
I'm not aware, let me double check the board.
Okay.
I have none signed up.
All right, thank you. Okay, first item of. Let the record show that the city manager has come in.
My clock's wrong.
Five oh two.
Gail. Can I have just a, I have a little emergency that I need the city manager to help me with?
Yeah, he said he would be there.
Before or after a meeting, and I was sure, and I'm like.
So I'll give you an update, so before we start our agenda.
Okay.
So that you will know when you drive by and see a, we're not really sure because we could not convert inches or feet into meters.
Can you use the metric system?
Paduco has a history or a they like to provide their cities with Christmas goodies. And they have given us a Paduco tree that we think may be 15 feet tall. That's gold, and it lights up, and they're giving us cookies and Pantone and goodies and boxes around it for the citizens of Zephyr Hills to help themselves.
Thanks.
They're bringing it this afternoon, and we've been working on all day trying to get logistics from Miami to here. They don't speak my southern, and I don't speak theirs.
Portuguese.
Portuguese.
And so it has been an exciting day, but they're bringing it in this afternoon at 5:30, and we'll be setting it up either tonight or in the morning, I couldn't really tell you, but.
Is it going?
We're gonna put it right out here.
Outside, you're gonna put food out?
It's wood, so.
They said council members are not allowed to get any of the goodies.
And we'll leave the cookies out, and then at night we'll bring them in. I don't think we can get it in the door here, is the issue.
Okay.
We're gonna look at it, so one of the conversations was to have it in front of the big wall, because it's about seven foot wide, and it looks like it's like three or four foot by seven foot rectangle, and then like 13, 14 foot tall. So we're gonna look and see if it fits inside, because there is food, but if not, it is gonna have to go out front by this tree somewhere.
Well, this is a map. Those doors, when they both open up, is there a, is there something in between that comes out, or is it?
No, there's no centerpiece. So it should fit in there.
I rule for
The heights would be 50 feet.
Metric system is three meters are about three inches longer than a yard. So if you just say it's a yard, three feet, you're pretty close.
Okay. We were all trying to figure it out with.
I have, yeah, you have a little cheat rule, so.
That's a good idea.
It's just a little more than a yard.
And they are being so nice. They are also bringing you cookies to pass out at the Christmas parade. So they want the council members on the float to be able to pass out.
No. I just found two bags of beads in my garage.
I have a box of beads, too.
I'm sorry?
I found a bunch of beads in my garage, I've been moving things around, so.
That'll be great.
We can give that a look, don't forget Founder's Day is coming up in a couple of months, so. We'll have them then there, okay, so that's my update, so we'll start.
All right, let's start with the number, item number two, business items, Gail, Ms. Hamilton.
We have a residential matching facade grant for 38228 Fourth Avenue Joyce and Steve Burgess in the amount of $2,500. They are installing windows in the home, and the grant is, they are more than matching our $2,500.
They say that they're not related to the council president.
Do I need to say that? Although I did have their daughter in class, so.
I think for the record, that's not a bad idea.
Right, just for the record, they're not related to the council president. Okay, do we have a motion to accept this residential?
I make a motion, we accept item 2.1.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the, our second grant is a paint grant for the same Joyce and Steve Burgess located at 38228 Fourth Avenue, they have chosen the three colors. Ricardo, do you have that on? Okay. We need to, I thought that it was part of that, but I'll go over that with you after, that's my mistake. So is it in your backup?
You talking about the paint colors?
Yes.
Yeah, they're in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are the paint colors, they have chosen three, the grant requires them to have three, they meet all of the requirements, so staff recommends approval.
Make a motion, we pass. All right, item 2.2.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes, donates. Item 2.3, Ms. Hamilton.
So this is phase two of the master park plan for the city of Zephyr Hills. The scope in front of you outlines the second services that they will provide, and this will be the final wrap-up of the plan. There will be additional public input, we're looking at what needs to be in the parks, what makes sure that we are not duplicating services. I will also say that as part of this, we met with, even though the scope had not been approved, we met last week with Keith Wiley with Pasco County, city staff and GAI, and looked at what the county could provide that we didn't need to provide for our citizens. Because as Mr. Wiley pointed out at the beginning of the meeting, county residents are city residents, they're all the same, and they need to provide services for our city residents as well. So we will have more information about what the county is proposing in the next coming weeks, I'm sure that City Manager Poe will talk to you about that. But back to the scope, this is the second phase of it, we always knew that there would be a second phase in budgeting, we budgeted $75,000 in this year's approved budget for it. Questions?
I have a question, given the flooding that we had at Zephyr Park, I think we need to relook at at least that portion of it.
In my director's report, we're gonna talk about that.
Because there's no need to spend $6 million down there and have it be flooded or destroyed, you know, and I know it's just a one-time thing, but you know, we gotta rethink this.
So what we did is, we met with Kim Lee Horn, they did an overlay of the flooding at Zephyr Park, and it is almost exactly matched to the flood maps. So what we looked at was how are we gonna go forward, and the idea was that, yes, this may be a 500-year storm, it may be next year we have a storm like this, we don't know. So the idea is that we will, if we build within the flooded areas, we will build it with materials that can withstand a flood. And once the flood is over, you come out, you pressure wash it, you clean everything off, and you move on. The things that cannot be flooded, you do not put in that flooded area, and there is room on the outside of the park that we could put, like bathrooms or things like that, so.
Right, and my concern is, I don't, I mean, I wouldn't think you would want the playground equipment being flooded either, just because those are tubes, water gets inside of those tubes, they're gonna rust, and you know, any warranty is gone that we'd have.
And we did talk about that as well, you know, what kind of things could you put in there that could be cleaned and reused?
And maybe, maybe fill needs to be gotten from the lake and put up there and raise these areas to the elevation where they, we don't think they'll flood, or at least they wouldn't have flooded at last, but I'm telling you, there was a tremendous, and we know, there was a tremendous amount of water down there.
Absolutely.
That was one of the conversations about the flood plain compensation, and if we build up an area, we're taking it, it'll be, what's it called, dirt neutral, I guess the site would be, so if anything, it would be negative, because we would take dirt from the site, we would not bring in fill, any fill that's used would be generated from the site. So those were conversations that we had with Kim Lee Horn that day.
And one of the other things we also discussed was, whatever we plan, will have to be approved by the Water Management District, and we need to start those conversations sooner than later, because I don't want to go down the road and come up with a plan that the Water Management District says no to. So we want to get them involved at the very beginning of this, of Zephyr Park.
I was wondering, I mean, we can dig the lake deeper, and that might be a way, I don't know how much you want to build up some of the site, then we'll be flooding.
Just to keep it neutral, it doesn't really matter, you know.
We can make it deeper, and that might be one way to hold water that'll stay where we want it to, kinda.
And we did talk about that, because there have been times when the lake is, or the area, I should say, is dry, and it smells to high heaven, so, you know, how do you make sure that there's water in there, and maybe digging it out deeper is one of those ways, but there was a lot of discussion about Zephyr Park and how we're going to move forward with it. But this is regarding the entire park system within the city. And the other thing that they will be looking at is level of service, and this is a conversation we need to have, what type of service at all of our parks do we want? Is there a minimum that this council says we have to have this at all of our parks, is it, you know, as long as there are some within the area, there's a lot of moving parts to this, that we want to make sure that kids in our community and families have, are accessible parks are accessible, and that they're close to them, and that the idea of having kids out playing in the park is what we want to do, we want to have items in the park that will interest them, engage them, and get them to participate.
This part two builds on, part one was basically an assessment of what we have now.
Yes.
Looking at everything and saying, this is what you have, this, you know, some of it's in good shape, some of it's in bad condition, and so this is gonna take us to the next level of how we replace, build upon, and put new stuff in all the parks.
Yes.
Engage and not duplicate all over the place.
Right, and what we're gonna have for the next 10 to 20 years, what is, what is the, you know, the horizon? As we grow and develop, our park system needs to as well.
Other questions?
Is there, I mean, is, when we look at this, is it done with a with a budgetary frame of mind? In other words, we can say we'd love to have a pool, we'd love to have a rec center, we'd love to have this, but we know that we have limited funds, and it'd be a shame for them to spend whatever, $75,000 or $80,000 and give us a plan that's like, oh, that's great, but
It has to be.
We can't, it's not economically feasible.
It has to be based in reality.
Okay.
And those conversations will be had with you individually and with our community as they build this plan.
And I would imagine that finance should be involved in it to a certain extent, what is our, what is the projected revenues that we can expend on parks, capital improvements?
Yes, and also part of this will be funding mechanisms, how do we fund it? How do we, you know, how do we get where we want to go?
As. Go ahead.
My main concern is like what Councilman Smith said, I definitely don't want to be putting a bunch of money into planning when we don't really know where we're gonna be able to put everything because of the flooding, and it could happen again, I mean, that's my main concern as well. And we do spend a lot of money on planning, which sometimes, I mean, we could just go in there and say, hey, we need this, this, and this, and save tons of money, and take that money, but anyway, I know it's gotta be planned out properly, so.
But this, they'll, what you, from based on what Commissioner Smith said, then, this will give us an idea, and maybe we can do, put it into the five and 10-year capital improvement plan, so that we can, we know what we're doing over the next five and 10 years.
And Steve, that's really what this is about, is what are you gonna do, and how does staff budget for it? If the idea is that in five years, you have, you know, one of our parks redone, Gunter Paw Park completely redone, then how are we gonna pay for it, we need to start early and start banking money for it, so yes, that's part of this.
Yeah, we gotta make sure that they're giving us kind of a five and 10-year plan that we can incorporate in our capital improvement plan, because we're doing, you know, the city yard, and we're probably gonna be doing drainage or stormwater things, and, you know, there's a lot of things going on that we need to be able to make sure we can
Right.
Plan them all out.
And to plan them all out, to be able to say to the community, yes, we're gonna do it, but we've got to prioritize, and that's how we do it. And we have someone else, a third party, that's looked at it and said, this is how you do it.
Questions? I have a motion then to accept this open fee for the master park master plan.
I make a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number 2.4, arborist services.
Okay, in conjunction with the incredible help of Karen Miller in our purchasing department, we have piggybacked on a contract for arborist services for this city, including our parks, our streets. This will also help us with the tree program, and I know nobody wants to talk about planting trees right now, but
You know, after all the ones that came down.
We lost so many trees. The tree program will roll out next month, the arborist services will provide that they will make recommendations on the trees that can be planted. They will come every other month in the scope to do the parks, to do the street trees, and they will also look at how our new tree program is going and work with the homeowner if it's, if they're not taking care of the tree. The idea is we want those trees to live and prosper. Especially, the idea came up that we had had an arborist at Hercules and at Zephyr Park make recommendations on trees that needed to come down, trees that needed to be pruned. Well, Milton took care of a lot of that, but what we're concerned about is what we can't see. So we need to do an evaluation of our trees, we have a tree ordinance, we are taking in money for funding for the replanting of trees, and so we need to come up with a plan. For those replantings, this services will also include, as they look at the parks, where there are places that need trees, how can we, you know, they will make recommendations on trees that need to be planted. We can take the recommendation or not, if we don't have the funds to plant the trees, but at least we can put it on our list of things to do. So it is trying to repopulate our tree canopy and make sure that for the next generation, we have the trees and a tree canopy, you know, when I first came, when we were talking about the CRA, one of the things that kept coming up over and over and over again, that the people loved, our citizens loved, was the trees in the community, the tree canopy, and we don't want to lose that, so this is, this will help us maintain.
And you show in here that they will inspect trees to make sure they're healthy, because, you know, like at Zephyr Park, for example, we've had trees that look really good, but they're hollow inside, and then they fall, and they've killed people.
That is correct.
They're gonna continue to do that, but that would be a citywide thing, as part of this.
It will be a citywide thing.
All right, so they'll be helping us plant them, but they're also make sure we have healthy trees.
That is correct, and if there is some problems with a tree, that pruning, we can save the tree by pruning limbs or something like that, they'll make that recommendation as well.
So this company's out of Fort Lauderdale, did we do that only because we're piggybacking?
They have a local, they have a Tampa.
They have a Tampa, okay, because I'm like, why did we go, why are they coming all the way up here?
I looked at that as well.
Okay.
Have any trees left?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I just, when I'm kind of following what you said, I just wanted to make sure that, like, if our parks guys out there and they happen to see a tree, and it looks, something looks off about it, that they can call them and they can come out and look at it, and I'm hoping that maybe somebody in the department there will I don't know, maybe have kind of like a checklist where we kind of look for those types of things.
Hmm, that's a good idea, I'll mention that. Because they're on the ground every single day.
Right. Like you said, I think Milton took care of probably most of the problems, but there's gonna be some other to crop up, so.
Yeah, and James probably has, James and people like that have an idea, I'm sure.
Right.
Different things. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I have heartburn spending $150,000 for somebody to tell us that tree should go here, or that tree looks bad, I mean, I just, and I'm, you know, I really do, because we might be able to use the IFAS up there for free and say, hey, come down here and get with us, and let's look at this block of trees, and let's see, it's just, I mean, $150,000 to plant a bunch of trees.
And I agree with you, and I, we reached out to IFAS first, but they will not take the responsibility of saying that that tree needs to be removed or keep that one, they don't do that. The biggest issue on the arborist and the cost is, is that they're coming every other month, because once they say a tree is good, their liability takes it on instead of ours.
I don't, I just, I mean, I just, I was thinking about it from my perspective, if that was a community that I put in, I would just get the, what's the, Stutzman to come down and say, hey, what do you think about that tree? He'd say, he's an arborist, he'd say, meh, I, let's look up in there and look at the canopy, he'd look at it, and I don't know, I just, I just have trouble spending $150,000 for this, because I, I just, I don't, I don't know this, I would do it.
And we aren't splitting it with the city, the CRA will pay for it one year, and the city will pay for it the next year, because it wasn't budgeted this year, and I had funds to.
And does it not, it doesn't include Hercules the first year or Zephyr Park, I don't think, does it?
That is correct, because we already had those two, but they will come in, because we lost so many trees at Hercules during the storm, they will come in and do the, and check it.
And honestly, I was thinking that that would be a function of our parks department to go through and say, hey, man, this tree looks bad, we've got a dead limb in it, rather than relying on somebody from Tampa to say, hey, that's We've got a dead limb in it, rather than relying on somebody from Tampa to say, hey, that tree has, looks bad and has a dead limb. You know, because we're here all the time. I just, I just, if it was my business, I wouldn't expend the money on this, that's.
Let me just say, though, that I agree with you from the concept point of view. But when you have a contract like this with somebody like this, they're coming when you call them. If you have an agency like IFIS or something that is providing a free service, they're not going, they're not going to be reliable in coming when you need them. And I think some communities have arborists on staff, and they pay them eighty thousand a year to do that job. So, if you can get somebody to come here for less than that, I think you're not doing a bad job. I mean, and that's one of the reasons we hire consultants to the degree we do, is because we don't have them on staff. So, if you want to hire an engineer, if you want to hire an arborist and some of these other people, then we won't be looking at some of these contracts with consultants that we don't like. But we don't, we don't want to staff it either. So, there has to be a give and take. You still need experts, and, you know, and I think our park guys can do a lot of, a lot of eyeballing certain things. But we've had, when I was city manager, we had a woman killed out there, sitting on a bench, park, a picnic table, at a tree that looked perfectly healthy. Nobody in our staff would have eyeballed that.
Well, and there's no guarantee that these guys would have saw that either.
Well, there is, but, you know, you have a better chance.
Maybe.
I think you do. Or we look at the budget next year, and we talk about hiring an engineer and an arborist and some of these different people.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just saw it, and I was like, to me, if I ran the golf course, I wouldn't do it. I just wouldn't do it, so.
Wouldn't hiring an arborist be cheaper than hiring this other company if we had our own? Because we did it, didn't we have one at one time?
No, I don't think so. I think you hire a professional arborist. Going to be paying them.
Or more, I mean.
Plus, you're going to be paying insurance, plus, you're going to be paying health benefits and.
And we can see how it goes the first year. If it doesn't work, there's an out, there's a thirty-day clause that we can get out of it, so.
I have a question. So, at the back of the end of the packet, there is, they got an hourly rate schedule. So, when we call them on a, let's say, okay, they're coming out bi-monthly, and then we say, oh, there's a tree we need to come look at. Are we going to go over here where the engineer makes a hundred fifteen an hour, and project landscape architect makes a hundred twenty-five dollars? Is that going to be all added on top of that, or is it going to be included in there?
That's part of it. And the reason the scale is in there, the pay scale is in there, is that's part of the contract, the piggyback contract.
It shows what they're being paid, I guess, you know, what they're, what they're.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just want to make sure that for what we're getting for that fifty thousand dollars a year is going to be not more added on top of it.
No, there will be no more added on top of it.
And the other question, you said, you said something about the liability. So, we're kind of almost like buying an insurance policy, really, is what it kind of feels like with that, in wrapped into that.
And that is, I mean, that's part of.
And I'm not sure where that liability goes, like, what happened, like what you said, Steve, happened. If they say that tree looks good, and then a week later, like Lance says, it falls on them, what, who's responsible now?
They are, they're going to.
They would be, and that's why they're coming out every other month.
The people are going to sue us, like the other families sue us.
They would be included in the lawsuit along with the city.
Right.
Yeah, the city's not.
So, there'll be two people paying them.
That is true.
The city's still going to be liable. Yeah, so it's really not an insurance policy, because they'll just sue both people.
But we can show the judge that we did everything possible to.
That's true, that is true.
I mean, I think I understand, you know, it seems like a lot of money too, but I understand what you're saying. If we, if we hire somebody full-time, then we have them forever too. And, you know, I guess, like you said, after the first year, if it didn't seem like it's working out for us.
I mean, and those are things we need to look at anyway. I think we need, you know, down the road, we need to look at, I wasn't really thinking about an arborist, but an engineer, an in-house engineer. I think we have to. There's an arborist that doesn't. This ends with.
And is there a possibility for one of our employees to become an arborist? You know, add.
They do some of the schooling?
I don't know what the requirements are.
I don't know either, but that might be something to look into in the future of, you know, continuing education and give them.
Yeah, put them on the path to do that.
I'll make a note of that, no, I'll pass that along.
With the, the one-year-out thing, I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the arborist services.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to. And the next item is the CRA's director's report.
Okay. I have a couple of items that I want to make sure that you are aware of. The Fifth Avenue Streetscape, and, you know, we call it the Fifth Avenue Streetscape, just because that's the first line on the bid form. But it also includes Oakside Cemetery, as well as connecting Fifth Avenue on Eighth Street to City Hall. It should have already been out, but Milton kind of gave us a delay. Karen has been busy with FEMA and other time-sensitive work. We talked about it this afternoon, and we hope to get it out next week. So, we hope that that will be moving forward shortly. Hercules Park, due to the storms, the contract was extended by forty-five days. We are working on a date for the grand opening. Once I have that, we'll let you know so that you are aware and how we're going to do our grand opening of Hercules Park. So, if you haven't driven by there, if you haven't looked, it's amazing. I know that we put out some pictures, and Landon, thank you for posting those. But people are very excited about it as well.
Can I give you, say something about it? So, I went to junior high school, did four classes for the teach-in, and then I also went to Academy at the Farm and did two classes there. And that was elementary. So, the junior high kids, I talked to them about parks, and I'm like, are you excited about parks? Or, oh, no, we never go to parks, we never go to parks. Said, seriously? Well, let me show you this video. So, I showed them the video of the park. They oohed and awed the whole way through. Well, we've never had a park like this. That changes it for them. So, I wanted you to know that.
I'm thrilled by that.
And I said, I will let Ms. Hamilton know that, because that's what she said. If people don't walk in here and ooh and ah, we haven't done our job. And they did with that video.
I'm so happy.
So, they are excited for open house and to be able to. And I think we need to do it to where we can have some of the, the classes there.
That's a great idea.
I think some of them should get invited and.
Yeah, Woodland wants to participate in the grand opening.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Woodland Elementary?
Oh, yeah.
Wants to participate?
Absolutely.
And I, I did teach-in at Woodland, and I taught, I talked to kindergarten first and fifth graders. And they all, I asked them about the park. I was trying to explain what a councilman does, and it's not easy.
They cared about, about what a councilman was as much as they cared about what a city manager was?
Well, it made as much sense, because they were like.
Because they could care less until I started talking about the parks, and then.
One didn't, one thing they knew about was traffic, though. But they all, they were aware of the park going in, and they were excited about it.
And that video has been all the rage.
It really has.
It really has, and I was glad that we could show it. And we probably need to send it to the schools and maybe have them show it too, and let them see what this is.
I know Wharton Smith is very excited about being involved in the grand opening and doing, you know, something for the kids and something for, you know, the adults, so that everybody can enjoy.
Yeah.
I drove by to look at it the other day, and Judy was with me, and I just drove in. It said, you know, no trespass. You can't go in there, you can't go in there.
Oh, sure you can.
I said, yeah, you can.
You just said the magic word.
You just, you just have to have a name tag, and then you can drive in there.
They're going to call the police or something, so, anyway.
So, and, and I will reach out to Wharton Smith too, because it might be fun to do some kind of bike giveaway or something like that for the kids, you know, and things like that. So, I'll reach out to them and ask about that, because they just donated bikes to the, the families that are getting into new habitat homes.
Oh, that's nice.
So, they're, they've been great partners in, you know, the community, so, all right, I'll reach out and see.
Then the next thing, the CRA master plan update. Now, this is the master plan that, that tells us how the CRA will spend our money. One of the things that happened in last year's legislative session was that now CRAs must include in their master plans goals and objectives, and they have to report on them every year. So, we're incorporating that as well into the master plan. And the other thing that we are working on, and we've talked about it today, is the sign standards and the design standards are being updated as well. We want to incorporate them into the city's process, because right now, if you are a business in the CRA, and you need to add on to your business, add a sign, do anything, the first thing you have to do is come and see me. Well, what if I'm not here? So, the idea of creating a schedule, a plan, that planning Rodney, Hunter, any of them can go through it and say, this is what the design standards call for. You're in the CRA, and this is what you have an opportunity, pick one of these that you can do. So, we're working on that. I hope to have an update for you where we do a presentation so that you can have input on what we're going to spend our money on in the next five years. So, we will do that in January, because we won't have a meeting, the CRA won't meet in December. We already talked about Zephyr Park entrance signs and park signs. We are working right now on the entrance signs for all of the parks in the city, as well as we are trying to locate areas for entryway signs. So, north of town, south of town, where can we put a sign that says, welcome to Zephyr Hills? And so, if you have any ideas, know of anybody that has something, let me know, because we are working on it. Now, the signs will all follow the Hercules sign, you've seen that, where it says, you know, the Z, jump right in. Will have a combination of the big sign with the pole. And some parks are too small, will have a modified pole that says Zephyr Hills on it. So, we are working on that. As we do each park, I'll bring pictures and diagrams for you to review and approve. We talked about master, the Zephyr Park update, and I'm going to go ahead and give Main Street's update, because Antoine.
He left with the machine.
Can I, can I ask one more question before we leave signs? Somebody reached out to me this weekend about the Jeffrey's House, asking why we don't have something saying, this is historic Jeffrey's House out there. Do you have any plans for something?
We do, and it is entirely, we are, I'm trying to get everybody involved in it, the Historical Association, and have them approve what we are going to do. And then also take it to the Historic Preservation Board.
Okay.
And have them approve it before we have it built. So, yes, we are, we are working on that.
Let them know.
It is in the works. It's, it's taken us longer than it should have, I'll be honest. But we'll, we are moving forward on that. And, and they, I do know that the Historical Society.
Association.
Association, I'm sorry. Aren't you all working on picking out historic buildings within the city?
Could be, not sure.
I had offered to the HPP that if they had historic assets within the CRA district, that this, I would come to the board and ask that we would pay for the signs.
We have older maps and lists of historic, it may have grown since, as the years go by, and more houses become eligible. But they have a good place to start.
Okay, that's perfect. So, we are working on that as well as extending that.
Good.
And then, as you know, it's the busy time of the year. We are, Halloween Howl was a huge success. We made more money on Halloween Howl than we've made in the last couple of years on it. We have the Christmas tree lighting tonight. At seven o'clock after your council meeting, we would like all of you to come out and line up and, and turn on the lights for us. We have Santa coming tonight, as well as the Methodist Church Choir is going to sing. December seventh, Festival of Lights. And I am happy to report that we have more floats this year than we have ever had. The community has really come out and supported the event. We've talked about, Main Street has posted items about floats, and people have really responded. And at this moment, we have forty-five entries. And last year, I looked at it, at this time, we had, and that doesn't include the city entries. So, and one last time, I do want to remind you that BDUCAU will be providing snacks for, or treats for y'all to hand out the night of the event.
It's at five o'clock, right?
I'm sorry?
That parade's at five o'clock. Six, six.
Starts at seven.
Oh, okay.
Parade start, y'all line up at six, and the parade starts at seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
And.
Same spot.
Same spot, just like last year.
Perfect.
The city crew has already contacted about decorating your float and getting it ready. So, we'll have it all ready for you. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I do have a question. You brought up the Jeffrey's House, and a while back, there was some talk about the Carriage House. Where do we stand on all of that stuff?
The Carriage House is now, the bottom floor is empty. Joe has moved all of his stuff out. You, we had it stated at a meeting that they no longer needed to do a produce stand because it was such an issue for him, so it is empty now. Main Street used it at the Veterans Parade and Halloween. But other than that, it is now empty, and we will come, Main Street's Economic Vitality Committee is going to come up with a plan, a business plan, on how we can use it and bring it to the board for your review.
Well, did we change the lease on that?
Took it off of their lease.
I don't think that's right. I think technically, it's still a part of their lease, so we'd have to renegotiate the lease prior to doing it.
It has not been taken off their lease? I'm sorry. We, at the meeting, you told him that he no longer had to have a produce stand in there, and he moved all of his stuff out.
Well, we were going to revisit the lease and discuss the payment, so they were, it was coming back to us, I think, but it hasn't yet.
Yes.
We're, yeah, we're working on payments. There's been a payment made. It has, it was not a full payment of all this due. So, as a staff, we're trying to get them up to date or take the action to move them down the road. So, we're working on that. We're trying to take care of it without making it too public, I guess I'll say.
You're in talks with them?
Correct.
And then we will get, if things work out, then we'll get a revised lease without the thing.
Right, and I apologize for misspeaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Matt is out sick today, has a sick child, and he's, he's on the phone, but I did not want him sitting by me, so.
Matt, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I was here probably when it started, so I introduced myself to him.
Oh, sorry.
Just, yeah. I'm really, since, right, we're trying to get him to come, comply with what's in some of the records, and he still hasn't provided. Really, the next step, if he does, is start a formal admission process. I guess, I'm doing this, I'd like to take the, I don't need a formal vote right now, but the temperature commission on the opening. You're comfortable before that approach, or is that kind of a red if I don't get compliance at the end?
Didn't hear what he said exactly.
So, Matt, I know that we've all received emails on, you've been working on this for a few months. And so, do we have a timeframe that, that you feel like we need to cut our ties at? Or are you feeling like we're going to be able to get success in getting compliance with the paperwork and the?
I think any success would probably be short-lived, so I think. I think any success would probably be short-lived. So, I think if, if there is success, it won't be a continuing thing. It's just how it appears. But, you know, it's, it's a percentage of sales. It's not, you know, it's, it's a lease that is incentivizes the restaurant because we want to attract that type of business downtown. But, so we're not talking about crazy sums of money, like we're working on all commercial lease, but just very long-term.
Thank you.
Chair, could I just ask that the staff would sit down with Joe? Because it's a great addition to downtown. Sit down with him, try and work something out, bringing it back to the next council, next commission meeting, which won't, which will be in January. So, maybe we just go that route. We, I think obviously, we enjoy having him down there. We want it. But you have to live up to your side of the obligation when you sign a lease. So.
Okay.
And I don't think there's a lot of risk in waiting till January because we're not, like I said, we're not talking about extremely large sums of money, but just the compliance has been an issue.
He has made a payment. So, that's a, a start.
That is correct. He has made a payment. He's made one.
All right. Does every, do we concur with Council Commissioner Smith's?
Yeah, I think that's.
Yes. Okay. All right.
That's two months.
We don't, we don't need a motion, do we? Or just?
No.
We'll just direct staff to, all right, staff will meet with him and report back to us in January.
And I would add that after that, it's kind of like, we need to go ahead and make a decision.
Make a decision.
Fisher cut pay. So.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get them clear.
All right. Thank you.
Nope.
Sure.
Right then.
Thank you. Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just going to sit here and wait for him to.
You know those buses, like you send them across the other side of the county to lose eight to nothing, and halftime, turn around and come back. That's a.
And as a parent, those are terrible to send.
No, as a parent, the one-one ties in the cold until ten o'clock.
The cold.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the front end.
Retirement of all second in the agenda.
Okay.
Maybe we can bring Dave back and get bit again on his way out.
Yeah. He was probably scared.
Well, they gotta get something situated here. So.
Pretty busy. I'm looking, trying to buy a few properties actually to flip. So.
Because you know, market's getting kind of soft.
Oh, yeah.
I might have to go make a visit to the property praiser's office because I just got a tax bill for six grand on a piece of property that I, that I bought. I don't know from, it's from 2002, but I bought it, you know, bought it like six years ago. They just keep jacking the price up. Like, you know, there's been no improvements to this property in ten years, and you're, you know.
I, I know. Like, right now, I'm not the happiest person because you gotta pay all the property taxes. So, yeah, it's, we have, I mean, a rental house and tax bill like five or six grand on. You know, so you only get like, you know, two grand. So, your first, first three or four months, you're just paying for insurance and property taxes. And then, you know, I.
If something goes wrong, like an air conditioner or whatever, you lose money there.
And when I look.
I did. I have, I had a loss because we had to buy a new roof, and we had to completely renovate an apartment that, you know, somebody had lived in for like ten years.
Yeah. So, when you have those, it's just like, and a roof, you know how much that is?
Yeah, fourteen thousand dollars for this little house. You know, less than two thousand square feet.
You have it, and then you're charging what for rent? Eighteen hundred?
Uh, yeah. Eighteen fifty is all I can get. And I can't even find anybody at that right now.
Ten months of it is, of the roof, all but damn near. So, really, you're, you're a freebie for a year, you know? But the roof, the property taxes.
That's like, all these people are like, well, can I rent your apartment for three months, for six months? No, I'm sorry. Because it takes us just a year to break even.
I know. I know.
We want you to stay for ten years, you know?
Right. Yeah, I, you know, that makes me wonder if I, I have a couple.
Okay. You guys ready?
I might, I might.
Where's our city manager at?
But then you look at that.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Zephyr Hills, Florida on Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. It is six oh four PM. I have the city clerk call roll.
Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Here.
Lance Smith.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson.
Here.
Steven Spina.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
Okay, we're going to have the invocation first, and it'll be by Pastor Kendall DeFord, and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we love you so much today, tonight. We thank you for the love you bestow on us. Especially this week, we're thankful for our blessings. We thank you for the blessings you give us, for the blessings of living and working in this community. We thank you for the many protections we have. We thank you for our first responders. I pray that you continue to keep them safe. We pray that your wisdom would be a part of this meeting tonight, and that we may give you the credit for everything that's said and done. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Okay, I want to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. And actually, hopefully, you guys can stick around because afterward, we're going to light the Christmas tree too. And maybe that's why a lot of you are here. But we're going to have, in just a couple minutes, we'll have citizens' comments. If you haven't already signed up to speak before us, you can sign up with the city clerk here. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. You can't see the clock, but I can. So, at this time, I'm going to, oh, actually, can I ask everybody to silence their electronic devices too? Make sure mine is. All right, we're going to start off with citizens' comments. And so, Ricardo, who was first signed up?
First, I have signed up former mayor Cliff McDuffie.
Okay. And as you come forward, and I know former mayor knows this, we need to name and address for the record.
Too tall. Cliff McDuffie, sixty-one thirty Seventeenth Street. That is in the city limits. Recently flooded. Right now, it's okay. Just want to take a few minutes because you only gave me three, to thank you for the opportunity to come back, come back again and talk to you about an ongoing problem that Masonic Lodge has. In the past three years, we have experienced three wrecks. Each of them have been very costly. There are, all three of them, two of them definitely were because of the intersection of Fourteenth Street, Fourteenth, Twelfth Street, and North Avenue. Excuse my burning of it, goes in the wrong direction tonight. The first one back in nineteen twenty-one was traveling south on Twelfth. Someone pulled out from the store, she hit him, came into the lodge yard, and tore a sign, didn't tear it down, but tore a sign up. Eight thousand dollars worth. Twenty twenty-three, vehicle turned east off of Twelfth, immediately pulled under the grass on the north side, which is our north side of the lodge. And there was slammed into by a pickup truck with a driver who was unconscious, had no idea where he was or what he was doing, and smashed in the north door, which was very expensive to redo. The, the third one was just, just two weeks ago, or a week ago. Vehicle, and we do have videos of this, was moving at high speed, apparently down Twelfth Street, headed north, and at two fifty-five AM, for some unknown reason, swerved into our parking lot. The tire tracks are about this deep where he hit his brakes, and he totally ran over and demolished two signs. I guess you've all seen them laying out there in front of the lodge. That's, that's going to be more problem. The problem there is that the registration insurance company has no idea who that passenger was. So, we're again looking at someone who did not have a, a second time, did not have the proper insurance to be driving. Our accidents are definitely a problem for us financially and physically, because there are times we have to get out there and, like this time, and clean up the debris. We do have pictures and that kind of thing. Another issue there is, quite frankly, safety of our, our children and also pedestrians of all ages. Traffic on Twelfth Street at the time that school takes in or gets out, you cannot hardly get across Twelfth Street if you're on North Avenue, going either direction. People don't stop for you, and you sit there, and then someone decides, I'm going to pull out anyway, if they got half a space to get into, and they say, try it. Kids, kids are kids. Teenagers are teenagers. They walk down the street, headed south mostly from the high school, and they just walk out in the street. You know, you're supposed to stop for them. Well, you may stop over them at times. And we're as concerned about that as we are about rebuilding or putting down structures in front of our building to keep vehicles from tearing our building up. We also feel very strongly that at times, we have functions, particularly our ladies have a lot of functions. And if someone's sitting in that front room at a luncheon or garage sale or whatever, and a car burst in, the witnesses are there, we're going to have a death on our hands. That's really expensive. I have a lady, and I want to thank my brothers and sisters for being here tonight. One of the sisters here tonight was sitting out towards Twelfth Street during a yard sale. She was, just, I don't know, she was talking to someone, and a car swerved off of Twelfth Street and almost hit her. So, she has a good reason to be here tonight. What I'm looking at, again, some three years ago, we asked for this, is stop signs, four-way stop. You got two-way stop now? I personally do not use that intersection. I will come down to Twelfth Street to go to Twelfth Avenue to go to Twelfth Street. Even to go to my own meeting. I don't know about three years, three years, three minutes or about, but we'd like to seriously talk to you about four-way stop signs. There are other avenues that can, that could possibly be addressed. And I'm willing to sit down with any of you and talk about what those are. But one of, one of the main problems with Twelfth Street is that heavy curve. If you're coming out from north on the twelfth or the crossing, it's hard to see someone coming around that curve. That's why I don't go out there anymore.
Well, Mayor, first of all, on behalf of the council and all of the city, I want to express my heartfelt condolences to you at this time. And, and I know the issue that you're talking about, you've been before us before, and talked about some of this. And I think that's what we need to do, is sit down with you so individually too, to, to hear. But at this time, I think that the city manager can address a couple of things. And we, because we've had discussions about it in the past, too.
We can, we can look at that intersection. We can have a traffic engineer look at it. If we're changing the traffic pattern, it has to be an engineer to look at it and, and sign off on it, design it, sign off on it. As far as myself, Public Works Director, Police Chief, we can make recommendations, but it needs to be a traffic engineer that designs that intersection and change that traffic flow. So, that's something we can look at, you know, and see what the best solution is for that intersection.
Yeah, I'm willing to sit with you and listen, if nothing else. My three minutes are up, I guess.
Does anybody have anything they want to add, or?
Any questions?
I think that, you know, it is time to look at it again. Another problem there is trucks and delivery trucks in that shopping, little shopping center where the convenience store is. You can't, when you're coming west on North Avenue, you cannot see north when you pull out. So, it, there's a lot of different little risks there that.
Cold truck or big meat truck, one of those. Yeah.
Right.
You just can't see.
Right. So, the city manager's right that, I mean, we can't, we can, we can't make a, we can't put a stop sign up without an engineered study. So, I think we would all agree to that.
And I think while we're looking at our hotspots, we can probably consider that kind of a hotspot too. So.
Yeah.
They're kind of all working together on that.
Yeah.
But thank you for bringing it to our attention, what most recent events. But, and then just stay in contact with the city manager on progress on that.
Can we send you all the bill?
I'm sorry? Oh, I don't.
You could send it. It won't happen.
I'm broke. I'm broke.
Us too.
Again.
Insurance is not cheap anymore.
Right. Well, I appreciate you bringing it, concerns. And again, I'm very, very sorry for your loss.
My pleasure to come back and see y'all again. I'll have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you for a few years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ricardo?
Next, I have Charlene Tid sign to speak.
Again, state your name and address for the record, please.
Charlene Tid, six zero four two Jane Lane. All right. Thank you for letting me speak for a few moments to, I wanted to come address the council. I, I live in the neighborhood adjacent to the YMCA property off of Geiger Road. I know that you're aware of our situation, but I felt compelled to come speak tonight. While we've seen torrential rains and severe storms over the forty-five years that I've lived in the neighborhood, we have never flooded. I can tell you that the intersection of Hazelwood Drive and Hannah Lane, that corner began to hold water after the YMCA was built. The retention of water got progressively worse, making the road impassable at times. The more building that occurred in the surrounding area, the more water we got. One particular house, due to its proximity, seems to have taken the brunt of the runoff. Please keep in mind, this is all prior to those recent hurricanes. The retention pond built near the YMCA and very near the northeast corner of my neighborhood has proved inadequate. After recent hurricanes exacerbated this problem, six of the houses in my neighborhood are now uninhabitable due to the water damage. And the one-way in and out of our neighborhood remained impassable up in. remained impassable up until recently because of high water levels. I want you to know also that I'm very concerned about the newest project that's being built on the northwest corner of our neighborhood. The elevation of this new project is far above the elevation of our homes. I know that an additional retention pond is being added there, but I'm worried that it will be insufficient. Our neighborhood has basically become a basin for this new development and it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that when you take away all the natural drainage from what was once pasture land surrounding my neighborhood and it has been and continues to be replaced with concrete and buildings, there's nowhere for the runoff to go. I'm asking for your assurance and perhaps your advocacy with the county and/or the developers if needed, so that my neighborhood will not suffer additional devastation from runoff. I'm asking if possible for some kind of written proof of compliance with whatever city or county ordinance is that are related to elevation and new construction for this project, some sort of guarantee that we're not going to be completely buried underwater. I'm also curious to know maybe what steps have been taken thus far to address our current situation with those six houses that are directly adjacent to the ineffective YMCA retention pond and what's going to protect them in the future? And then maybe what additional plans are being put in place in light of this new project that's going in to help our neighborhood moving forward? Thank you.
Well, thank you, Charlene. You did that perfect. Well, and I know, actually, we're still kind of in recovery mode. We have plans to meet with the county and I'll let the city manager explain.
Yeah, so Ms. Tid, I know we had, well, left a couple of messages back and forth. So what I'll start with is I know Councilmember Smith, Councilman Smith has reached out to the county and is trying to get meetings scheduled with staff, the Public Works Department there. As a city staff, we reached out to our, one of our consultants and asked him to review the YMCA plans and to review the, what's the project in cottages? The project is going on now, just kind of look at everything there and assess it and give us a report back. We've not received that report back. So we took that step about a week and a half ago to have that review started. Councilman Smith got a response back today that they're looking at dates so that the city and the county can sit and have conversations related specifically to the neighborhood, your neighborhood. That's the information I have at the moment.
Is there anything further that myself and my 21 neighbors need to do?
I would say that let's keep pressing the county also because in my mind, I'm not an engineer, but we do have a little bit of an outfall that we can take advantage of, I think, by pumping, not naturally drainage, but by pumping, that we might be able to take advantage of. But I hate to even say that I just the other day got the right people to go to with the county. So if it was the city, we would be able to do a little more, but we're going to push on your behalf for your neighborhood because we know that it's an issue, so.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming down.
Ricardo?
I have Rick Hillman signed up.
I will say, Mayor pretty much touched everything that I was about to talk about, especially with the lodge. I was happy to have you.
Thank you.
Vicki Wiggins?
Good evening. Vicki Wiggins, 38550 Fifth Avenue. I just wanted to let you know that December 12th, I have designated as Chamber Day, right? The breakfast is that morning at Winola and our new Pasco County Superintendent will be speaking at that breakfast at the Edwinola, 7:00 AM on December 12th. At 11:30, we have a ribbon cutting with Kirk, who just opened up his Two and Two Restaurant. You know, you all know our owner of the Two Minutes Restaurant. He is having a grand opening of his new location on that same day at 11:30, which I'm inviting all of you to come and attend. And then December 12th.
December, thank you.
December 12th, Chamber Day, right? You're gonna start out with breakfast, you go to the ribbon cutting with us for lunch, he's gonna feed everybody, from what I understand. And then from 5:00 to 7:00 that same day at South State Bank is our chamber mixer and you are welcome to attend that as well. And that always has food too, so we'll feed you all day long on December 12th. All right? Thanks.
Vicki, what day is the Economic Summit?
Economic Summit is December 11th, so the day before here in this room from 9:00 to 12:00. Breakfast from Olga's, coffee from the Bean Buggy, and lunch from Chick-fil-A.
Are feeding us.
I'm feeding you all week long. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Does anybody else signed up?
I have no one else signed up.
Okay, does anybody else, like, any citizen comments? Okay, like I said, again, need to name an address for the record and you have three minutes.
Rodney L. Home Computers Unlimited, I live at 7422 16th Street in Zephyr Hills. Council members and all, I do enjoy standing in front of you. The problem we have on the street in front of the lodge is one of physics. Anytime somebody comes around that corner and they lose control, gravity spins them into our building. So if you can't do stop signs, could you at least put some kind of barrier up there to protect the building and the property that we have? I know we would love to see a four-way there just for safety reasons, but any type of barrier at all would make a big difference for us and we would appreciate that. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else? All right. Moving on to the mayor's portion of the agenda, and we have two items there. We're gonna switch them around from what's listed on the agenda. We're gonna start with the retirement of K-9 Bolt because I hear him over eagerly wanting to get it over with, I think, so.
Good evening. Derek Brewer, Police Chief, City of Zephyr Hills. So this was a scheduled retirement. Bolt has done, what, 10 years there, Lorenzo, with the city? For those that don't know, unfortunately, Bolt actually came down with a life-threatening condition the day after Milton hit. That required surgery for him to survive. And I'm very thankful for the donor that actually paid for that surgery so he could actually enjoy retirement. Because he was a phenomenal dog and he deserves to spend time at home and not have to work anymore. So at this time, we would like to commemorate the remarkable career and retirement of K-9 Bolt from the department. For years, Bolt has been more than a police dog. He has been a dedicated partner, a vigilant protector, and a beloved community member. With unyielding loyalty, Bolt has served alongside his handler, Officer K-9, K-9 Officer, Officer Lorenzo Lamouche, and our officers, working countless hours to keep our streets safer and showing a bravery that only the most noble possess. K-9 Bolt's career was filled with achievements, from apprehending suspects to detecting narcotics, proving time and again the invaluable role of a K-9 unit in law enforcement. K-9 Bolt was deployed over 1,100 times, which resulted in the following. 473 arrests, the seizure of over 4,000 grams of methamphetamine, 150 grams of fentanyl, over 5,000 grams of other illegal narcotics such as marijuana, cocaine, heroin, and various controlled substances. His located street value of drugs was totaling almost a million dollars. Bolt had 57 successful tracks resulting in the apprehension or finding of missing persons. He also accounted for getting 26 guns off of our street. Bolt's work has undoubtedly helped save lives, prevent crime, and build trust within our community. His service is a powerful reminder of the courage and commitment that every K-9 officer brings to their work each day. While we're gonna miss seeing Bolt every day, we're grateful for the years he has given us and his dedication to every mission. As he heads into a well-deserved retirement, we wish him plenty of rest, love, and joy of being around those who care for him most. Bolt, you have given us your best. We honor you today as an officer, a hero, and a friend.
Looking the other way, I'll talk to y'all from both sides.
Good.
I want to thank everybody that's here, all the guys in the background that are around here, guys that spent hours finding people that had illegal narcotics, that kind of thing on them. And me and Bolt literally spent two minutes giving them probable cause to be able to search the vehicle or find the drugs. If it wasn't for all these guys you see back here, we would be nothing. And then there's one guy that, when I started this career, I wanted to be a K-9 officer. I wanted to be a K-9 officer since I was a little kid. And I honestly, whenever I first got the position and everything, I didn't think I could do it. And there's one guy that trained me, day in, day out, pushed me, pushed my dog, probably one of the greatest trainers I've ever been around, and also one of the greatest friends. And I got a little something for him and I just want y'all to understand that this guy, if it wasn't for him, I definitely would not have stayed in K-9. He taught me everything that I know that comes with K-9 and I'll definitely, he'll be a best friend and a good friend till the end. And that's Johnny Rooks.
Stay. We'll do that afterwards and keep you beatin' on you. There you go, brother. I'm always.
Oh, my heck.
Thanks.
So just real quick, quick little story on him. So when I went and bought four dogs and tested them for, he was in a K-9 school with Kevin Burns from A C P D and two guys from Pasco. So I would never bring the Pasco guys with me when I was picking their dogs because I didn't want them to go, ooh, that dog's pretty, I like that dog. I tested the dogs based on their ability and what I saw in the future of what they're gonna come out to be. But the city dogs came because I can't tell them, you know, I can't tell his chief, no, I don't want him coming. Okay, whatever. So the smallest guy in the school got the biggest dog. So Bolt, when he was, how old was the one we got?
Something years.
He was much smaller. So Bolt has not grown much, but he's been toting this guy around for the last, what, eight years now? Yeah. You feel it in his shoulders, though. But we always, around his whole career, he always, man, you got me the biggest dog in school. You're the tallest dog, I can ride him like a horse. But Bolt, like the stats that the chief said, he produced for you guys, the city council, and he produced for you guys, the citizens of Zephyr Hills. And like all the guys that I trained, they all hold a special spot in my heart and so do the dogs. So, and like he said, we'll be friends forever. I've been retired for a year and a half and I still keep in touch with the guys. So, but, and that, that's crazy, bro.
Officer Lamouche, thank you. Thank you for being his partner. Thank you for all you've done to be the person that he needed you to be. And I'm so proud of this team that came to support you. This is what our city is. If you ever question what our city is, and if anybody ever questions what our police department is, they need to see this. This is what it means to support each other and I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the brotherhood of the K-9 officers because there's K-9 officers from other agencies out there right now too, so that's really, I'd like the way you guys, right?
It's definitely that and I gotta be faithful and keep it as possible without my family as well, so. He gives plenty of playtime with them, so.
That's good. Sounds like he wants some playtime right now. Congratulations.
You will see in the next 30 days, he's gonna be like this. When you grab your uniform, he's gonna wanna go to work. My first two retired dogs, I lived in the same house. When I retired the one, I brought the second one, he busted through my pocket. Go to work. When I got my third dog and I retired my second, he busted through the same window. So for 30 days, he is gonna be losing his mind when he looks at that, that's why he read those hard keys. After 30 days, he won't even put his head off the floor. His retirement's pretty darn good. Watch.
So what he's telling you, Lorenzo, is board your windows up. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
And I will give time for the family and some of the other, the work family to, if you guys wanted to go ahead and exit now at this time. You don't have to, you can stay around for the other presentations.
What a beautiful dog. What a beautiful weapon they got him.
Such a great dog.
Okay, while they're exiting, I'm gonna go ahead and queue up the next, we have a, well, I guess Mayor, you could go ahead and present them.
Yeah, we have a presentation from Freebie and we appreciate Mike Moore for bringing that to us and his partners, so thank you.
Definitely a great day in Zephyr Hills, isn't it? With tree lighting after this? Amazing.
Every day's a great day.
Now, Mr. President, you put me after police and a dog.
I know.
Really hard to follow up on. Really hard to follow up. But Mr. President, Mayor, Council, thank you so much for inviting us here today. I'll be brief because I'm gonna bring up the Vice President of Business Development, Claudia Miro from Freebie, but Freebie right now is in 50 states, I mean 50 cities across the state of Florida. They're definitely a viable, sustainable transportation company that will, is really there for the people of the city and they do amazing things. So with that, I'm gonna introduce Claudia Miro from Vice President from Freebie.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, everyone, Mr. President, Madam Mayor, and the rest of the council. Claudia Miro, Vice President of Business Development and Government Affairs for Freebie with offices at 371 Northeast 61st Street in Miami, Florida. So thank you so much for your time this morning. I do want to go and give you kind of a high-level overview of Freebie. It's about a 30-minute presentation. I know I have a lot less than that, so I'm gonna kind of breeze through this. If you hold your questions to the end, I'm happy to answer any questions, any clarifications you might need. So as Mike mentioned, Freebie is the future of public mobility. We have, we are a microtransit company. It's a free, on-demand, door-to-door microtransit company and we've been operating here in Florida since 2012. You know, just physically moving people everywhere they need to go within their local communities. So think of it as the public transportation version of Rideshare, where you can, you know, it's app-based, you can request a ride, and it's on-demand. you can, you know, it's app-based, you can request a ride, and it's on-demand, door-to-door service. But beyond that, think of it also as your first mile, last mile, providing that connectivity to mass transit. We like to say that we enhance mass transit, we don't compete with it, you know, serving in some of those areas where it maybe doesn't make sense to have a bus route, or you maybe had a bus route eliminated, or you decided to, you know, develop outside of where the current bus routes exist. Microtransit makes more sense in those areas. But beyond being, you know, that transportation solution that gets you from point A to point B, Freebie is also a very powerful economic development tool. We have the ability to physically drive traffic to the front doors of the local businesses. And so, when you're talking about community revitalization and making sure that businesses stay, keep their doors open, sometimes in our core commercial areas or downtown areas, you have limited parking availability and such, or high traffic, it's always great to bring in a Freebie service, because we can deliver them there. And now, how do we drive traffic there? We offer free advertising for all of the local businesses within the service area through our mobile platform. And I'll get into that a little bit later. But again, our service is not a cookie-cutter solution. We are fully customizable, and we work hand-in-hand with you, with your city staff, to make sure that we design and tailor-make a transportation program that really does make sense here for Zephyr Hills. And again, one of the best part about our service is that it's 100% electric. So, to give you an idea, if you look at the map on the screen there, as Mike mentioned, we're in almost 50 different cities here in the state of Florida, from Kissimmee, as far north as Kissimmee, and as far south as the Florida Keys. Over here on the West Coast, we are in Bradenton, Dunedin, and St. Pete Beach. We have, Freebie's work in any kind of community, doesn't matter how big or how small, we've got service areas that are 23 square miles to service areas that are a square mile and a half. Again, we tailor-make it so that it works in your city. And then, how does Freebie work? If you look at this, this is what the app looks like when you open it up on your phone. Freebie is a combination of Rideshare meets Yelp, where you're able to request a ride with a touch of a button, but you're also immersed in everything and anything that Zephyr Hills has to offer. If you see that center carousel there, it says, "Take me to the Great Catch." You can promote local businesses from there, local restaurants from there. The city can even do surveying from there as well. If you look at the bottom banner that is talking about that Christmas tree lighting we're about to have in a little bit, you can also connect, let's say that you have a bus route, and it has a live transit tracker, we can, we have KPI, API capabilities, and we can definitely do that so that folks can plan their ride, beginning to end, all from one easy-to-use app. The idea is that we're inspiring these local destinations. If you get in your car, you might head out to a neighboring community, but if you ride the Freebie, you're gonna stay local, and the money that you're saving on fuel, on, you know, tolls, on valet parking or parking, that money's gonna be deposited locally as well into your own local economy. This is an example of geo-fencing. The way the technology works is that we geo-fence certain areas, and as long as you're within that certain area, you can request a ride to and from. Now, we have cities that will geo-fence the entire city, and cities that say, "You know what? We're just gonna geo-fence our downtown or our commercial district," or "We'll do an inner and outer zone." If you want to bring folks into the downtown area, you create an inner zone for, let's say you're downtown, and the rule with the technology is you have to start or end your ride wherever it is you want folks to be, you know, brought into. And so many different ways that we can do that. We can even go into neighboring cities if there's like a shopping mall, or, let's say, a Walmart, or something, a business hub that folks want to get to. We put a tight geo-fence around that without servicing any other area. So, so many different ways we can get creative with that. I should also mention, we offer senior services. We have services that we contract with cities, with different universities, but also senior exclusive services that serve senior communities, 65 and up. So, there's different ways that you could use a Freebie, and I just wanted to mention that. So, how to use the app is super simple, very user-friendly. That first screen, you're requesting the ride, hitting that button. Second screen, you're dropping your PIN to set your pickup location. Third screen is your where-to. Now, you can type in an address, as simple as 123 Main Street, or you can put in something as simple as Publix. And if you have more than one Publix in your service area, you'll get a dropdown. Speaking of dropdowns, if you look at the category section, you have restaurants and bars, arts and entertainment, points of interest, salons, spas, grooming, you name it, we have a category for it. This is that section where we're doing that Yelp side of the business, where we're doing the free advertising for the local businesses. So, say you know you want to head to dinner after the commission meeting, but you're not sure where you want to go, hit restaurants and bars. You're gonna get a dropdown of every single business, every restaurant and bar within the service area there, and that's, again, part of the free advertising we do for the local businesses. And finally, that last screen is you're going to just say how many folks are in your party. And this is also the section where you're going to say if you need a wheelchair accommodation. Are you a mom with kids? Do you need a booster chair, a car seat? You let us know then. You hit confirm ride, and once you do that, you're connected to one of our drivers in real time. You're gonna get a message asking you to confirm your address. They're gonna let you know if there's a car in front of you, what the approximate wait time is. They're dropping off folks ahead of you. Now, all of this is through the app. However, if you're 65 years and older, and perhaps don't have a smartphone, or you're not tech savvy, you don't feel comfortable, there's an 800 number for those folks, 65 and older, or with disabilities, that can call, and our switchboard operator will do that same function. Another option available to you is the flag-down feature. If you see a Freebie, flag it down. Some cities turn that feature off, just because they don't capture all the information that we capture through data, that I'll get into in a little bit. So, I'm gonna move forward a little bit, so that we can talk about who's riding Freebie. Everyone is riding Freebie. It's highly equitable form of transportation. So, we find the demographic changes throughout the day. In the morning, folks take it to get to their jobs, but you have suits executives that use it as well. Seniors, as I mentioned, are huge riders of the Freebie. They go to the doctor, supermarket, you know, the pharmacy, et cetera. Tourists can use it, as long as they're within the service area, and even pets, our little canine friend that was here to look, is also allowed to ride on the Freebie. So, again, highly equitable form of transportation. And then, one of the high-level selling points of our service is our community ambassadors. That's what we call our drivers. With the idea that drivers drive and community ambassadors really become the face of the community, they are 100% Freebie employees. They are not independent contractors like you might see with Rideshare. They're W-2 employees, and because Freebie is considered public transportation, we have to conform to FDOT Code 14-90. What does that mean for you? That means we're doing a deep dive on that background check. It's a level-two background check, health screenings, drug screenings, random drug testing. We even do sleep apnea studies, so that when you get into a Freebie, you know you're getting into a safe ride. In fact, 70% of our riders are women, because they feel so safe. We have cameras inside the car, audio inside the car, cameras facing forward, facing backwards. It's always the same driver, so you get to know their name, they get to know your name. It's wonderful. And they also sort of double over as neighborhood watch. If they see something, they say something. We work closely with your police department. And economic development, what I mentioned to you earlier is that we have this economic development component. We have a team of economic development officers that go door-to-door, offering that free advertising I talked about. They leave QR codes at the reception desks of the concierge staff of the hotels, at the storefronts, and also at the hostess stands. Just all of this designed to help folks, you know, drive ridership and know about the service. This is what that free advertising looks like. They're gonna be featured in the category section, as I mentioned, and that's kind of a little picture, a blurb about the business. And then, they also have the opportunity to participate in a Freebie deal and discount. So, hey, if you take, leave your car at home and ride the Freebie to come to my place of business, I'll give you 10% off. Or if you come to my restaurant, I'll give you a free drink with entree, free dessert with entree, really just whatever the business wants to offer to encourage public transit. Now, with all those cities that you saw earlier on the map, every single one of them started off with a 12-month pilot program. And so, that is low risk and low cost. And by the way, we've never had a cancellation so far. It's proving that they've gone on before, beyond the 12 months. It proves that it works, the ridership numbers are there. And so, as I was saying, it's low risk and low cost to you, because we own the vehicles. All that you pay for is the hours and the days of the week that you decide you want to have the service in place. It's 100% turnkey. We own the vehicles, we wrap the vehicles, we do the mechanics on them, we provide the customer service, we do the hiring. Everything is done in-house. We come out and we pull, our engineers pull the permits for the charging stations, we install the charging stations, and our vehicles live there. The only thing that we ask from the city is saying, "Hey, is there maybe a public parking garage that we could, you know, park our cars?" Absent that, a public works lot will do a park, anywhere that we could set up shop for the vehicles to charge, and our employees to charge them while they're on their brakes, et cetera. Again, you decide, the days and the times of the week you want to operate, you decide what the wait time is. Do you want the wait time to be 15 minutes, 20 minutes, 10 minutes? Of course, keeping in mind that the lower your wait time, the more vehicles that you'll need to meet that level of service. And then, data collection and flexibility speaks to the fact that we're gonna give you a live dashboard, so that you can track how many people have taken the Freebie, how many people are waiting, what the average wait time is, in real time. Heat maps, and all sorts of different information that you can get. And the flexibility side of that is that if you need to make tweaks based on the data, we encourage you to do that during the 12-month pilot. We do have ride pair optimization that will make sure the algorithm does what the most efficient thing is. If they pick one person up, is it efficient to pick up the second person requesting the ride? If it's too far away, then we drop off the first person before moving on. That's what that means. And then, funding solutions. We have, obviously, it's funded like any other form of public transportation, aligned out of the city's budget, but there are ways to subsidize a program. My favorite is FDOT has a grant. It's the Public Transit Service Development Grant, and that's a 50/50% matching grant. So, it pays for the 50% of the whole cost of a Freebie. Now, there's also a Department of Energy grant that has a minimum of $250,000, is also a 50% matching grant. We help you apply for these grants. We hold your hand, work with your city staff, to make sure you answer the questions, to really help you, your chances of being awarded those grants. Applications open in the spring. Award notices go out in October. And then, monies don't come in until the following year in July, in line with the state's fiscal budget. The other thing for funding the service is, as you can see, the vehicles are now, they're mocked up for Freebie Zephyr Hills, but if you allow us to sell advertising, and that's totally up to the city, we have a whole arm of our business that sells advertising. And right now, we have, as Coca-Cola, Pepsi, we're running a campaign on Starry drinks on 42 of our vehicles. That brings in revenue, and we will do a 50/50 revenue share with the city to help lower your costs even further. And so, that's what I have for you today. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Claudia. And some months ago, myself and the city manager, and a few others, participated in a presentation, and I thought it was worth all of us seeing. And then, we had our consultant, looking at our, I guess, our comp plan, and they talked about multiple modes of transportation within the city, trying to get some of the cars off the road, and other ways for people to move around. And I thought of this, and I brought it up, and they were aware of you guys, too. They didn't actually bring you up in it, but they said that's another option. So, that's where I felt like it was really something that we should all take a look at. And what's really, the good thing about it is the customizable hours, days. I mean, that's, that's what makes it good, I think, is that you can kind of set it up wherever you want to. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions for?
Yeah, and I visited with them at the League of Cities. You know, I think with our senior population, this might be
That's what I thought of, too.
A huge game changer for them, because, as you know, the taxis are kind of going the way. It's hard to get a taxi in town. It just is. It's very difficult.
Fighting it.
Yeah.
Public transportation, to, you have to schedule that way in advance to have someone, if you are in a wheelchair or you're a senior, and they come pick you up in the bus, but you have to schedule in advance, and if you need to go run to Publix, and there's no Uber or Lyft here, you know, that, this is a great opportunity, I think, because Uber and Lyft are independent contractors, which, you know, that's, that's a different model.
And as opposed to a bus, it is a doorstep, the doorstep, as they said in the beginning of...
I have a few questions. So, we would pay for this service, the city would pay Freebie for the service. Would we determine the number of vehicles to start, or is that something you do based on population, or?
Excellent question, yes. So, we have transportation technology tools. We work with your staff, and so we have simulation models where we take into consideration, once you tell us, "This is the area that I want to geo-fence," we take into consideration the density, the population, if you're in season or not in season, and take all that information, and just figure out how, you tell us the wait time, very important factor, how long you want them to wait, and then we run a simulation to see how many vehicles it would take to meet that level of service or that wait time. And then, we make a recommendation. Have cities gone astray from our recommendations in the past? They have, but we always will give you the caveat. You know, if you go with less vehicles than we recommend, your wait time is gonna be longer than, you know, whatever you had your sights set on.
So, you'll do an analysis, basically, of the population, who we think riders would be, and then how you would meet that need. And then, the rides are free, obviously, Freebie.
Yes, free to the rider.
And they probably would be tipping them, I guess?
So, we do allow tipping, absolutely. What we don't allow is solicitation of tips, and we don't allow a tip jar to insinuate a tip. But we do want them to make as much money as they possibly can. If folks want to give them a couple of dollars for providing excellent service, that's great. You know, I don't have to tell you that we, in the transportation business, are competing against the Amazons of the world, who are paying a lot of money for their drivers. So, we usually, we hire from within the community, so it's job creation for you, and also, they're gonna know what's a good place to get a good steak, right, or go shopping or whatnot. So, that really does, does help as well.
And then, that geo
Geo-fence.
Geo
The geo-fence.
Okay. Then, we could moderate, modify that as we go along. Let's say we wanted to start small, just in the city limits, and then maybe expand it to other places as we go.
Which is our recommendation. We always recommend that you start small, even if it's within a corridor of the city limit, or depending on how big you want the program to be. There is no charge to expand or retract a geo-fence. Again, the caveat would be, the more you expand, the more vehicles you're gonna need to keep a certain level of service. You don't want your wait times to be too high, which is why we say, "Start off small," because we want you to have a very successful first year. We want folks to get familiar with the service, feel comfortable with the service, and then, you know, it'll eventually take off. And I'll tell you, in most of our areas, in the first month, your ridership is established. It's kind of like when you're giving away free food, there's no leftovers. Same thing with free rides, right? Once the word gets out.
Well, what I like about it is that, you know, for the mass transit, you have to get yourself, I see a lot of bus riders, but I also see a lot of half-emptyer, you know, buses. And people have to get from one place to the bus to get to where they are. And this would be kind of a more individualized service, but kind of a mass transit-type idea. What are kind of the initial costs?
Great question as well. So, I did want to mention, as Mike reminded me, so CRAs are also a funding source for this service. So, I have six different cities that have 50% funding out of the CRA and 50% out of the city. But to answer your question, for us, when you're talking about cost, the biggest driver of cost is gonna be how many hours you do a week, and how many vehicles you're going to need. For, from our standpoint, we have certain fixed costs that we have to cover, as you can imagine, the largest of which is insurance. Whether you do one hour of service or 250 hours of service, that's cost is gonna be the same for us. All that to say, Councilman, that the more hours you do a week, the less your cost per hour, and that's how we charge. And that's gonna be, for the Tesla vehicle that I showed earlier, you're looking at $35 to $40 an hour. The more hours you do a week, you're closer to that $35 an hour charge, the less hours you do, you're closer to $40, $42. But to give you an even better idea, so that you can, you know, run your numbers, let's say that you were doing 70 hours a week. Now, that could be 10 days, 10 hours a day, seven days a week, right? Or however you want to distribute those hours. And that's another thing. Once you have those 70 hours, you can change them around however you want. I always ask you to give me two weeks, because I do schedule my drivers two weeks in advance. But let's say you're doing 70 hours, you're looking at about $135,000 for the year, for, per vehicle, for 70 hours, to have those cars run 10 hours a day, every day of the week. Yeah, 135.
So, we have a large winter population, as opposed to summer population. Is there, is the car specific to our town, so we would have to have, we couldn't fluctuate on the amount of cars in the summer as opposed to the winter?
You could.
Okay.
As long as we know that upfront, right, what months you want, like when you're in season.
Yeah.
We can definitely work with you on that.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, you know, city of Bradenton, they have spring training up there. And so, you know, they've talked to us, they're like, "Well, there's a possibility that when spring training comes in, we're gonna want extra vehicles." So, as long as you let us know with time, then we can figure that out and account for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They also have anything? Okay. And then, like you said, when we saw the presentation, I thought of the seniors going to a doctor's appointment or something, or even we have the parade here coming up. There's no place to park a family coming here to watch the parade. So, it's just a lot of different things. I think probably it'd be good for some, one of us, or some of us, to visit St. Pete Beach, or Dunedin and Seashore, working out for them, and go from there.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, and I appreciate you coming in. And thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda items. We have seven of them. We can vote on them in entirety or pull any for further discussion.
If we approve the consent agenda as presented?
A second.
A motion in a second to approve all seven agenda, consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Moving on to the city manager's report.
This is a request to, for $111,300 purchase of a generator to, or generator purchase to replace the existing generator at the police department. The existing generator is over 21 years old and is showing signs of wear. Currently had to put a new board in it to keep it running. Lead times on generators Uh, lead times on generators can be up to a year or longer, uh, so we're requesting permission to make that purchase through RCM Utilities, which we have a continuing services agreement with, um, in the amount of one-hundred-eleven-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Any questions?
Um, and I saw in the memo, it was gonna be paid for, with Police Impact Funds?
Right.
Have fees? Yep. Okay.
I move we-
I second.